Amy's the strong silent type.
Okay. Jeff, Amy, can you guys hear us? Sheila?
I can hear you.
Okay, great, okay. Alright, so the time is currently seven oh one P M. And I will call this meeting to order. Uh, can we get a roll call, please Sheila?
Mayor Protem Not.
Here.
Trustee Britno.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Handerhand.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
Okay, if we can all uh stand and uh recite the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please be seated. Alright, alright, uh first item tonight is we've got public comments. Uh persons desiring to make public comment on items not on the agenda shall activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, do we have anybody with their hand raised on Zoom?
I did not hear from anyone today. Uh Amy, I don't know if you have any hands up? There are no raised hands.
No, okay, and then.
No one signed up.
Alright, nobody on the sign in sheet?
Nope.
Okay, okay, uh next item on the agenda is gonna be the consent agenda. Uh that includes the minutes of the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting, the renewal of hotel and restaurant license for Minus Claim Restaurant, and the renewal of the fermented malt beverage license for Come and Go number nine oh five. Uh we can break any items out if any board members wanna discuss these or make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Alright, so we've got a motion by trustee Klassen to approve the consent agenda as presented. It was seconded by trustee Seifert. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, do we have any conflicts of interest here tonight?
Nope.
None here.
None here.
Nope.
None from me either. Alright. And do we have any agenda changes by staff or by any trustees? Nope.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have uh one.
Okay.
I just want, I wanna just provide one quick teaser. I'd like to give you uh at the board and the community an update on some conversations I had today at Garfield County. And uh if it's okay, we can talk about that at uh during the staff report section of the meeting.
Yep, I think that'd be great, thank you. Alright. Perfect, we'll move on. So our next item on the agenda is gonna be the interview for the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy. Um this is going to be, and forgive me if I mispronounce this name, Charlena Chancy?
Charlena.
Char- Charlena?
Charlena.
Okay, so I was really close.
So close.
Alright, uh great, well if you wanna come up to the uh table here?
Not particularly, but I will.
And if you don't mind, you can state your name and address for the record.
Charlena Chancy, three twenty-six Cottonwood Drive.
Great, um and if you wouldn't mind, maybe you can just start and you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're um applying to be on the P N Z board.
Okay, um I was born and raised in the valley. I went to schools all up and down the entire place. Um we moved to Silt in two thousand fifteen, I think. Um raising my twin daughters here, um and I just wanna be a bigger part of the community. Um I figure I would like to try to help shape it in some way. Um I've been taking sustainability classes. I'm currently trying to turn my yard into all native plants. Um so if you see the house that looks kinda crazy, it's probably mine. They're not weeds, I promise, or they're kind of weeds, but not really weeds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna be a part of its uh future.
Great, that's awesome. Um I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but since trustee Klassen just left the Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe you can give us some insight about, you know, some good characteristics of a new appointee.
Um I guess the biggest characteristic is is the the willingness to to be a part of the town, a willingness to, you know, be proactive, you know, in in the town and a willingness to, um I'd say, you know, obviously, you know, get along with everybody on the board and, you know, kind of an open mind, because there are some issues that that seem like they're black and white, but not necessarily all the time, but you know, just kind of an open mind. And, you know, and a willingness to, how how do I say this? Um. When there's uh code issues that come up, you know, and sometimes, you know, do you go with the code or at the same, I mean, I I know I just said, you know, have an open mind, but at the same time, we have issues that, you know, it's like, okay, the black and white part is the code, but, you know, it's it's how do you interpret the code? I mean, do you interpret it, you know, more or less, you know, as as the the town is in the right or, or if they're in the wrong, or if the citizen is is, you know, has has a very valid point to change the code?
There's fifty shades of gray in anything, so absolutely, you've gotta work with different people and whatever's best for the community, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I think part of what maybe trustee Klassen's saying too is, you know, it looks like based on your application that you don't have any history sitting on any type of board like that, which I think is,
I have none.
ju- ju- which is just fine, you know, I think as every trustee here can attest to, you know, when you come here for the first time, you're kinda like, oh, got it, that's how we run a town, okay. Um, so you said you moved here in twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Right, so seven years, so I think a lot's changed in Silt in seven years and part of I think what I read, you know, was really interesting, because I think it's something that we've all talked about quite a bit and have had this discussion is, so you have people that have lived in Silt for a really long time and some of our citizens in Silt have lived here where the majority of these roads were dirt roads.
Absolutely.
And as you can tell, Silt's growing along with some of the other kinda Colorado River Valley towns, you know, Silt, Newcastle, Rifle, Parachute. Um I'm just curious to know what you think about the growth of Silt and what you've seen in the last seven years, you know, do you, do you like it? Do you not like it? Do you see continued growth? Do you not want continued growth? Like, what's your viewpoint on that?
You know, I actually used to live here a long, long, long time ago. Um there used to be a pink house across the river. It's torn down now, I used to live there, um so I've definitely seen it over the years.
So you know both sides of it?
Yes, uh thirty plus years of this, actually, or plus or minus ten. Um so I really like the direction it's going. When I thought about moving to Silt before, it's never somewhere I wanted to move to. No offense, and then I got here and there has been a lot of growth and a lot of, um I love the green spaces, I actually love the little house community that's on the other side. Um I love the open space, the high water farm over there, um making use out of, you know, what we already have and trying to do it in a way that's gonna be more beneficial for the town and the people that you plan on bringing here.
Yeah.
So, I find it really interesting and I'm really hoping that it can continue to grow in that same way.
Sure, sure, I mean, I think that's good, um, you know, my my viewpoint on that is I think if you have a small town that, you know, is, has a good culture and and people wanna raise their families here, inevitably and naturally, it's going to grow, right? So, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, part of that responsibility is growing somewhat responsibly with, you know, where commercial goes and where residential goes and where mixed use goes. And I think that you would kinda get that pretty quickly, you know, within the first couple of meetings, so um that's, that's kinda my point to that, so I don't know if you guys have any questions you wanna ask here, so.
I have two, but I'm willing to wait. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I get that a lot.
What role should sustainability play in planning and zoning decision making?
Um I think it's important in a lot of the aspects, I mean, I could say that it's important in all aspects, I mean, 'cause it really is about leaving something for the future generations, so I think leaving something behind or not leaving it behind, 'cause we're moving forward with it, so creating something that can be continued to be used, but at the same time maintaining the culture and the history that it was um created on, I mean, Silt is, uh what, I think it was an agricultural town, sugarbeets, it doesn't really seem like that's the case anymore here, but um it's still a small town values, um and balancing those, and like I said, history, culture with um any possibility to keep it um keep it going for the future generations, so that they still want to live here, so a large part, but like I said, just balance between the two.
Okay, thank you. Um if you could bring one business type to Silt, what would it be?
Hmm. Something to do for kids, I've got fourteen year olds. Um and I don't want them to have to go that far and I'd prefer them to not be looking at their telephones, so anything that would keep them occupied and still be able to make enough money to make it worth being there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a of question, um a valley seems, in my opinion, to be unsustainable growth. Um just ca- a mass chaos, do you have any ideas on how to prevent that from from developing here in our community?
Well, I think it's a lot of how you are planning to, if you build it, they will come kind of thing, I mean, what do you, what do you want it to be and how do we want it to be, 'cause growth is going to happen, but how we temper that with who we want to be here at the same time, I mean, do you want someone who's just living here to find some place to live, and if they are, trying to make that a better place for them? I mean, what kind of homes are you going to bring in? Is it gonna be apartments? Is it gonna be single family? I mean, what kind of um what kind of community do you wanna make out of it, really?
That's a million dollar question, we've been, we've discussed many times on the board here.
Yeah.
Trying to get it, nail it down, you know?
I don't know if there's really any good answer right now, I think it's kind of test and go and hope it works.
Right.
I think we're in better shape than that way. That's for sure.
For sure.
Yeah.
Nope, no questions for me.
Any other questions here? I don't have any other questions, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll make a motion to approve Charli.
Charlena, like Charlie.
Charlena.
That's okay.
Charlena.
For the P N Z uh commission of vacancy.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by trustee Seifert to appoint Charlena Chancy to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was seconded by trustee Klassen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're now on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Woo-hoo!
Alright.
Yes, thank you.
Staff will probably reach out to you to kinda get you the rest of the information, but.
Beautiful.
It's your spot.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for volunteering, we appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Alright.
Cool, we have a full board again.
Yeah, right, that's great. Well, and the next item on the agenda is gonna be interviews for the Vale Board vacancy. Um we have three applicants.
Mr. Mayor Protem, do you think maybe we wanna, seven fifteen or fifteen minutes early, do we wanna maybe move it a few minutes in case this uh Dennis is showing up? I don't know.
So, we're gonna, we'll find out.
I might add, I did get a email from Ms. Wilson this morning, and she has pulled her application.
Oh, okay, okay, then I guess.
So we have no Denise Wilson, so is Kara, Kara Arcara?
Kara, yes.
Kara Griswold.
Gillian.
Gillian Omen? They're both here.
Okay, I well, I didn't know if the other one was, so.
It's a great point, though, I was gonna think of that.
I just thought if she was gonna show up, I'd give her a few minutes, so, okay.
Alright, and then, uh so I'm gonna turn this over to Chief Kite. Chief, are you with us?
I am with, um, these um two have um submitted interest into our Vale Board and um they're here to talk with the board and you guys can ask any questions um that you would like.
Alright, thank you Chief, so I think we'll start in order of what's on our agenda. So that will be Ms. Griswold, if you'd like to come up, please. So same, we'll have you state your name and your address for the record.
Sure, hi everyone, uh Kara Griswold, I live at four thirty-three Eagles View Court here in Silt.
Alright, great, so we all have your application, but maybe the same, you could just start by giving us some uh information about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Vale Board.
Sure, um currently I work um from home, I do regulatory and licensing for insurance companies. Prior to that, for twenty years, I was a corporate paralegal. Um and during that tenure, I've served ten years as the director of the Food Shelf in Waterbury, Vermont, where I lived. Uh prior to moving here, we moved here three years ago. Um and I just really love giving back to the community and I love helping people. It's kind of what I look forward to doing and I just thought this would be a great opportunity to contribute, get involved in the community and give back at the same time and help people that are in need, victims and that are looking for a little assistance and a little aid, so I thought, I think this is a great, a great board and a great budget item that you have on on the town budget, so I just thought it was a great opportunity for me.
Awesome, alright, well, we'll open up, uh any trustees have any questions you'd like to ask, Ms. Griswold?
I have one.
Okay.
It goes back to your um statement about being the director at the Waterbury Food Shelf, by the way, I thought Waterbury's gonna be Connecticut for sure. I'm also from the north, you was, oh, she's from, no way. How do you think your experience there will benefit you in this role on the Vale Board?
The one, the one thing I used to always tell my volunteers is you don't judge anyone when they walk through the door, there, you don't know anyone's story, you don't know what they've gone through to be here. They are reaching out for help and you don't know, you don't know anything, and you were just here to help them. And I think that that's important when it comes to helping anyone that's in need or looking for assist- assistance of any kind, so I think that I I used to, every volunteer, I would go through training with them and just and just make sure they understood that. Doesn't matter what car they drive in, that might be the last car, that the last piece of their old life that they have left that they're holding on to. So that's, I think that, I'm very empathetic with people coming in and I think that's, that makes a big difference, for me anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think empathy in that position's a pretty um uh integral, you know, thing to have. So, do you have any other um, you know, hi- history or have you ever done anything that involves assisting, you know, victims and all?
No, I've never done any sort of advocacy or anything like that, no.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and then no other involvement with, you know, any sort of um police department or anything like that, it's all been kind of in the court system, if you will?
Yes.
Okay, got it, no problem.
Yeah, that was my question.
Fine.
The only police involvement I would have had would be, again, through the food shelf when they would call me with someone that needed help or something along those lines, so.
Totally, totally understand that. Um and then the time commitment, obviously, no problem for you, working from home, flexible schedule
Yep.
sort of thing, okay, got it.
I can't say.
Any questions from you?
I don't have anything to.
No, I can't say I have any.
Anything from the two of you?
No. That was kinda my.
Okay.
Other than thank you for being willing to give your time to be a big part of the community, it's good.
You bet.
Have any of those spots.
Cool, well, I don't have any further questions, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thanks.
Appreciate it. Alright, so we have no Denise Wilson, so at this time, then we'll ask Gillian Omen to come on up. And uh same for you, if you don't mind, you can state your name and your address for the record.
Gillian Omen, two forty Cheryl Drive.
Great, and uh same, if you don't mind, just uh telling us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Vale Board.
Okay, um born and raised in Silt, I left Silt for a whole whopping two, maybe three years. Um moved back in two thousand eighteen when I purchased a home with my husband, we're currently raising our two children here. Um I've always been pretty involved in our community and so now this is my way of becoming involved again since I've moved back, so.
Okay.
Um I used to be a case manager, so I've worked in the community a lot. Dealing with advocacy and that kinda sort of thing and just trying to move my way back into that, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I need out of the house.
Got it. The one, one question that I have, you know, regarding um your history working as a case manager, and I know that there's many different types of case managers out there. Um did any of that involve any type of, you know, victim impact, you know, type things when you were a case manager?
Several, uh mostly I worked in mental health.
Okay.
Um so my client tolerating, I could deal with any situation. I did a lot of, I did go to court with clients, that kinda stuff, to advocate for them in court. Um dealing with crisis situations all the time, so.
Okay.
A lot of.
Got it, good.
I have only one question.
What's that?
Anybody else? You, nobody wants to go first?
No, go ahead.
Well, technically, you're going second, so go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ready, set, go. Um from, from your response to question number one, you you mentioned maintaining a sense of community. How do you expect your work on the Vale Board will provide that?
Um I feel with how fast Silt's growing, the community, we're getting a lot of new people into the community and they don't always feel like they're a part of the community yet, because so many people that are like local locals that have been here forever, we kind of are close knit and bringing new people in is been adjustment for everybody and so building a sense of community for everybody is just knowing that their voices are gonna be heard, no matter what the situation is and that the town is here to help them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from any of the other trustees?
I was gonna ask you about the case manager, but you answered that one, so.
Sure, yeah. Um what I would like to do, actually, just right now, before we make a decision, is, so Chief Kite, are you still with us here?
I am.
Um, you know, maybe for, you know, those that might be listening or watching, um can you give just a quick overview and background of what the Vale Board is and what the Vale Board does for us?
The Vale Board is a group of citizens um within the town um that uh gather as needed. Um when we have an application and the Vale Board is a compensation fund for those who are a victim of crime. Um they submit in the application and the necessary paperwork and once everything's pulled together, um the board is called together and they sit down and review it, uh to see if it falls within the guidelines and the um policies and procedures behind where the money's to go to.
Okay.
I sit on there as strictly as an advisor
Okay.
to answering questions that may come up in the report, um that's about all my involvement with that is. And Ms. McIntyre sit, sit, also sits on the board as um she has a secretary, she um reviews policies, procedures and makes sure everything stays within those guidelines.
Got it, okay, great, well, thanks Chief, that's a, I think that's a good overview, uh just so everybody's aware, so. Uh if we don't have any other questions by any of the trustees, thank you Gillian, we appreciate it very much.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to add that trustee Britno is the board representative on the Vale Board.
Now, is there just the one spot open, is all right now?
Yes, I believe we do have.
Sheila?
I thought we had two.
That's correct, it's just one position right now.
Oh, yes, because before I left.
I was just wanting to make sure, 'cause I.
We have one opening?
Yeah, we just have one. For quite a while, so I wanted to make sure that we were, where we were at exactly.
Yeah, we filled it before I left.
So, we 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 can discuss, obviously, I think between Ms. Griswold and Ms. Omen, I think we have two very, you know, qualified applicants that would do a great job for the Vale Board representing, you know, the the citizens that are victims of crime or just a um victim impact, so um I would be happy with either to be on the Vale Board, so I'll let everybody else somewhat discuss or make a motion on who they would like that to be.
Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Can we have a rock paper scissors?
It's not exactly how the process goes, but um I understand the uh the point there.
I mean, it's it's tough when you, this is a tough situation, a little uncomfortable to talk about other, filling out positions from this posi- from the board in that you have two people that come, both highly qualified, both do a great job and we don't really, we have to have the discussion out here in front of everybody, go, okay, now, who gets to do the job?
That's correct.
And, I mean, this one's like you said, it's, hey, obviously, both people be qualified, both people do well, um.
Um, I'll make a motion. And I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Gillian Omen on, to the Vale Board.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion by trustee Klassen to appoint Gillian Omen to the Vale Board, that was seconded by trustee Seifert. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay. That was me, I.
Nay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh motion passes five to one.
One, two, three, four, yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Gillian Omen, you are now on the Vale Board, and Kara, thank you very much for your application.
Yes, and definitely, definitely appreciate you.
And I hope you, if another opening comes up, please come forward, whether it's this or anything.
Or anything at all. Definitely is opportunities to help.
And Sheila, for the record, the nay was Sam Flores, trustee Flores.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You're welcome, okay, great. Uh staff will be in touch with you as well about the rest of the uh information there for you, okay? Thank you so much. Alright, next item on the agenda is gonna be Community Development Update, Zoning and Building, this is an info item. Uh this will be with um, is that Community Director Manager? I don't know what C D M stands for, Nicole and Planner Chain, so I'll turn that over to them. Is either Nicole or Planner?
Oh, do you wanna, do you wanna start out, or you want me to go right into the land use?
Um so the first slides are gonna be the land use, so I'll let you kick it off.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, and we have had some changes, you know, we have um two building inspectors now, uh we'll get to that a little later. Okay, land use, you've, you've, you're aware of some of these, but not all of them, there are a lot of things going on uh behind the scenes in terms of development. And a couple, I'm surprised they haven't come forward uh a bit quicker, but let's uh go one by one. Rislenda, that's the old, the Divide Creek Center, and it's gonna be up, well, the proposal right now is up to a hundred and sixty residential units. Um there is a, supposed to be an entertainment center and some uh mixed use and commercial. Um and that, right now, the P U D rezoning has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, you will be seeing this, I believe, at your next meeting on June the twenty-seventh. And they're also in the process of doing a subdivision sketch plan and we have talked over the subdivision and infrastructure issues with them. Uh and they were found to be acceptable at this point. And um I guess, I guess I should ask a question from um uh Mr. Mayor Protem, you want me to stop with each one to see if there's a questions, or you just want me to go through?
No, I, I think maybe, yeah, I think maybe when you get done just with each one, you could just ask real quick if there's any questions, 'cause I have a question about the one that you just went over.
Okay.
Um and just, and just out of curiosity, but what, what, what do they consider like an entertainment, are they talking about like an open pavilion or an actual building, like what's an entertainment center?
Uh well, I think I'll call it an event center, so someone could have a celebration of life for someone, someone could, there could be a wedding. Uh there could be a gathering for a number of reasons. And they uh they're expecting that in the middle of the project, I don't have the um the site plan up right now.
Okay, and we're talking about like a, like a building event center? Or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's how I understand it.
Yeah, no worries, I know that's, that can change, I was just curious what that was, so.
Yeah, and um what I will do is ask them to uh make an initial presentation at the twenty-seventh, uh because it has changed a little bit, but not much since you first saw this concept almost a year ago, but good to refresh all our memories.
Got it. Alright, that's great, any other questions?
Camarillo Phase Two, uh you just recently looked at that, there are seventy residential lots on this reinstatement. And uh right now, they are. And uh, right now they're in the process of submitting engineer's cost estimates. And I guess I'll call it the final development plan, the engineering sheets uh, addressing the park at the southwest corner of the uh, subdivision along with drainage as well as the Orchard Avenue Extension. And if that wasn't submitted today, it should be submitted sometime during the week. And you just had this on your agenda uh, a couple weeks ago, are there any questions?
Uh, nope, doesn't look like it, thank you.
Okay, Stony Ridge filing number two, uh, this was uh, before you, before you had Camarillo. And there are forty-one dwelling units or forty-one potential lots in Stony Ridge, a few, a few of them are, are duplexes. And that's just forty-one in phase two, some in uh, phase one and three are not totally built out. Uh, what you did at that meeting was you approved adjusted building envelopes, cause essentially there's uh, some wider utility easements and provision for uh, stormwater drainage. Uh, they have not come back to us yet, they're looking at the engineer's estimates and what they would like to do, they have told me is have some sub phases and they're trying to um, see which works best for them. And what they wanna do is they they wanna put some infrastructure in quickly and then start going vertical in a small area. Instead of taking six or nine months to do the infrastructure, if the economy turns and someone's put a lot of infrastructure in and they're not getting any return.
So, I.
I, I thought they'll be in already, but um, it is what it is.
So I have a, I have a quick question on that, so will that, will that part of it be part of the updated subdivision, subdivision improvement agreement where the board will approve them doing what would they would consider a sub phase to do the building quicker, right?
Yes.
Is everybody?
Yes, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be an entirely new development agreement or if it's gonna be an amended agreement, cause if you remember before, phase two and three came in together.
Yep.
Uh, developed phase three first and that one's been sold.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, next Sheila, please. Uh-huh, River Run, there's two of them, uh, first of all, the small single family cottages. Everybody calls them tiny homes, but technically they're not, they're six hundred and fifty square feet, they're stick built and they are on foundations. Um, up to thirty-five have been uh, pre-sold, I think eighteen are under construction. And the approvals have been granted and they are putting in infrastructure for the remainder of those uh, seventy.
Can we?
And, and just below that, you'll see River Run self-storage, uh, when they came in and amended the planned unit development zoning a few years ago, uh, one of those elements was to have self-storage along the uh, north property frontage and along the west. And uh, they had approvals for, I believe, of, well, if they could fit everything, sixty-one thousand or sixty-five thousand square feet of self-storage, it's right now forty-five thousand. And seventy-one hundred square feet would be climate controlled uh, for a site plan review. Uh, I have recommended some changes, I, I, I've essentially asked them to enhance one of the buildings which is very visible from the interstate and even from across the interstate. Uh, as well as some um, uh landscaping, so they are uh, adjusting the site plan for that and they're also redoing some of the infrastructure to take care of the um drainage input from the town engineer as well as fire protection. Uh, they should be coming in, I thought they're gonna be in line for the meeting of the uh what, twentieth of the planning commission or twenty-first? Uh, they did not meet that deadline, if they come in for the one in July fifth, uh, they'll be for that one. Any questions?
Yes, quick question, um, the self-storage, I kinda remember are they gonna have a separate entrance other than the tiny homes and were they gonna be all fenced in? Kind of, you know, fenced around and stuff, I know we talked, if that's, I remember way back when, if that's, am I correct or am I thinking something different?
No, you are correct, there will be another uh, access at the northeast corner of the project, basically uh, basically where that sidewalk or path in front of Golden Gate ends.
Okay.
There'll be a um, an access point in there, I guess theoretically they still could access it through the uh, tiny home, but I don't think that's a good item. Uh, and that's one of the issues we've talked about is the separation between the residential and the and the self-storage, I've asked that there be um, you know, some landscaping, uh, they do want screening fences, but the discussion has been, um, well, they the applicants did not really wanna provide, in my mind, that much landscaping because uh, to them it was all the same ownership, basically the land and I my pitch was, you have seventy other owners that are gonna be there, the single family homes and that needs to be treated um uh, fairly carefully.
Okay, I agree, um, I, I would like to bring up something as it relates to the River Run, small single family homes and maybe for the trustees that aren't aware of this, but I think in one of the previous planning and zoning commission meetings, um, there is a scenario out there where um, the developer, uh, basically I believe gave a lot or the use of a lot to the builder to build a home there. And all of those homes were to be the same size, the same design and the same type, right, that's what we approved. Right, and we went through a lot of changes to allow that development to happen as a board, okay, and as a town. And the builder actually built that house larger than the other homes that are there, so if you remember, each of those homes has a front patio, they have a back patio, but they're not enclosed. And the builder, I believe, built this house with an enclosed front patio and an enclosed rear patio, do I have this correct so far Planner Chain?
Uh, yes, I believe you do.
Okay, so. What's that?
The rear was not enclosed, just the front porch.
So the front porch was.
But it was two feet wider and two feet longer.
Correct. And they're not supposed to do that. And I, I believe either the developer or the builder both knew that and did it anyway. And then came back to the planning and zoning commission essentially to ask for forgiveness and not for permission. And we gave them the forgiveness on the, on that board. Um, and that is what it is at this point. If that would've came to this board, I don't think that that would've happened. So, I think that it's really important that we as a town and we as a board let them know, the developer and the builder, that that cannot happen. We approved that development in good faith that that would all be followed and it was not followed. And that really disappoints me between either the developer or the builder over there, so if any of our board members are not aware of that you should be aware of that and you can go back and look at the planning and zoning meeting uh, to get some further information. So, and maybe as a town, we pay a little bit more attention to what's going on over there as our inspectors go to do their inspections and you know, to basically see how the building is going to make sure that that's not happening again. So, that's a quick update for the board on the River Run. Small, single family homes, and if I have any of that wrong, feel free to correct me, but that's what I read through and I'm pretty sure that that's.
No, you're, you're correct, and if you hadn't brought it up, I, I would've, just for clarification.
Yeah, so there you go, so.
Yeah, now, there was also an element, we, we brought them to the planning commission to ask about this because uh, other owners started to want to be able to expand their living space and the planning commission said no, they were approved for X and it needs to stay X. Actually, um, to be technical, I think they were approved for three hundred ninety-nine square foot. Uh, small, single family cottages and they are a little bit bigger for a number of reasons, but um uh, they were instructed at that meeting that you're basically staying with that footprint that you have.
Right, so there's one home over there that's larger than all the rest and that one home belongs to the builder, correct?
Correct.
That's not okay.
Yeah, no, and it, it was, I mean, he did it without any, asking any permission.
Yeah, so anyhow.
So how do we prevent it from?
And there, there, there was a lot of finger pointing, but let's not get, you know.
No, 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 we, we won't, the, to, to very directly answer your question, it would be when that comes to the planning and zoning commission, when they ask for forgiveness on that that commission needs to say no.
Tear it down.
That's correct.
Yes.
It's the same scenario of when the developer buried those water lines underneath the pavement in Stony Ridge. And we said that's okay, instead of making them tear the road back out and having their engineers inspect and sign off on that infrastructure. Okay, so, I just, we just need to be consistent, but we need to be smart about it.
And can P and Z say when the developer and the builder come up again, if they're going to come up again, can they forewarn them, if you're one inch over, it's gonna be a tear down? Just to put them on notice that there will be no forgiveness to prevent them from having to come back and ask for it?
I don't think that there's anything wrong with that, you know, and, and my, and my point of bringing it up now is maybe to make that point, you know? Like, don't do that.
But be, P and Z can be clear about it and say, look, you got by one time, it will not happen again, if you come back to us. We're gonna take a slight hammer to it.
And also I think through the discussion, you know, the, the town staff that's with us on the meeting I think they very clearly get the message that's being sent and they can also convey that information. You know, cause they're having further discussions on, you know, the building and, and the ongoing construction. You know what I mean, and, and they can have that discussion too as the staff, like, hey, we've heard that, like, don't do that, so.
Yeah, and, and I'll add just to, you know, defend P and Z, I agree with, with uh, Mayor Protem's you know, comments and yes, it, it shouldn't have been allowed, but we conceded based on the fact it was already done, he already had, I mean, he already had probably seventy-five, eighty-five percent of it built by the time they came to us, so I mean, we did say no more. We'll allow the one, but no more.
Yeah, got it, no problem, and I'm not calling out P and Z on that, I suppose, but um, it's, it's just so we're all understand what has happened over there.
But yeah, I mean, we're, we're all in this together, you know, board and P and Z and, and yeah, I mean, it kinda needs to yeah, you guys gave your blessing on the project and they deviated from it.
Yeah, and what I would, the last comment that I'll make on that is, it follows up your comment about he had that thing seventy-five percent built, much like the developer had already installed all that infrastructure and they paved over it. They did it wrong and it's, it should be their responsibility to rectify the situation and make it right. If they're going against what we've approved. It's not our fault they built it.
Yeah.
Tear it down, do it right, so, that's the only point I'll make on that, so anyhow. Anybody else wanna make any comments about?
Nope.
That? Okay, we can move on, so I think we'll go to Heron's Nest Planner Chain.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I, Heron's Nest, you saw a concept or a concept discussion uh, just about a year ago. And Heron's Nest, as most of you may know, it's to the west of uh, River Run. Or should I say um, Tire Tech technically? It is not in the town, it was in the town, but then it was de-annexed essentially, twenty-seven and a half acres. I believe there are seventy-eight long-term, or long-term rental RVs. And we've talked to them about annexation, uh, we had a conceptual uh, discussion with them again recently and they uh, still would like to do uh, a, a modern modular home um, development. Approximately, I think ninety-five to one hundred units that I saw, they've enhanced the um, uh, the open space some. And what their plan is, once they get the long-term RVs gone, they would like to put some um, higher density housing or apartments uh, on the south side of the site. That is an annexation uh, application, I mean, it would be an annexation application. And that's totally discretionary for uh, for the board to accept, they have not made an application yet. Are there any questions?
I'd have a comment on that, I would, I'd be totally against that, um, the this septic system over there is garbage and that would be our responsibility, I would believe at that point. And then um, dumping, being in the wastewater industry, dumping uh, RV sewage into a wastewater plant is septic to the plant, cause it sits in a tank and goes septic instead of being processed correctly for a wastewater plant.
I have a question about that, so, do a lot of those, they don't just feed right into the, like you know how, obviously, right, the sewage from my house is, it goes directly to the water treatment plant or the wastewater plant? The, like the KOA and stuff's not like that?
Uh, the trailers aren't, the, the RVs aren't, RVs are in their tanks and then they pull the, pull the nozzle and drain them, you know, as they're full.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean, if they're holding it in the RV, right, okay.
And that's septic for a wastewater plant.
Yeah.
In themselves, so that'd be, I don't know, thirty-one more million dollars for our wastewater plant, according to our engineers, but, that's a different argument.
No, I.
So yeah, I don't.
Those, those are really good points that I hadn't considered and, and I think it'll be a good discussion. I, I think, long-term for the town, coming up with some solution over there is needed and hopefully we can all maybe, I don't know, shoot, it might be in ten years, who knows?
Probably after the wastewater plant's built.
Yeah.
You know, there's no way you could do that now with the plant we have in place today.
Yep.
So, that's a bit, very long, faraway discussion.
So where's all their sewage go now?
They have a septic tank.
Septic tank.
They have their own septic, that's, you know, it.
Yeah.
It's hard to maintain there and it's near the, the water and wastewater plant, near the water intake, so um.
I don't know if there's a way to blow a whistle.
It has interest in keeping it clean too.
If there's a way to blow a whistle on getting that inspected, their, their uh, septic system.
Well, I think you just did.
Yeah, that's county, so.
Oh.
With the counties to get out there and inspect it.
No, I, I agree, if they, they wanna annex into the town, they're gonna have to change a lot of stuff.
Yeah, okay. It's a long project, I mean, we've been talking about Heron's Nest now for a couple of years and I think we're still at the same place, but, cool. Alright, I think we're good.
Okay, next, um, I just put the address for the uh, property, fourteen twenty-one Frontage Road, what is that? That's the fifteen approximate acres to the west of Holiday and there's a contract on that. And the proposal or the concept is to have a mixed-use development, uh, they've had interest from a a truck stop, of more of a, a national type restaurant person, they're like maybe some small uh uh, small commercial spaces and some residential uh, closer to the river. And uh, that has not, an application has not been made, they're still going through and looking at the feasibility.
Okay.
Don't we already have a truck stop over there?
Yeah, do you know what truck stop, that's, that is?
Uh, it's in my notes there, I th- I think it's Maverick they're talking to.
Uh, that's like a gas station. Mavericks are nice, dude.
Yeah, I grew up in, uh, what we need to keep on track with two, two liquor stores, two come and goes, two two dollar stores, two, two truck stops.
We got two hotels.
We got two hotels, we gotta do the logo, two for two or something.
Cool.
This is a yin and yang thing now?
That's, well, that's good, hopefully that, I mean, it'd be great to develop that, okay. Think we can go to River Trace?
Okay, are, ready to move on?
Yeah, you can, thanks.
Okay, uh, Lot One, um, I just call it River Trace in Bell Vista, it's also called the Village Center at Bell Vista, it's also called Village of Painted Pastures. I'm not sure what it'll be next week, but, there are three lots in that area south of the roundabout. Uh, there had been site plan approvals for Lot Two, which is a multifamily residential. And then Lot Three, which is the far east of some self-storage and Lot One is for some warehouse, office, commercial space, it would uh, be designed to accommodate the uh, commercial and other uses that are allowed, no residential in that area, I believe the it's twenty-one thousand square feet of space, the parcel size is about two point two acres. And it'll go in front of the planning commission uh, next Tuesday, uh, the twenty-first.
Nice.
So where's this look in relation to what's, that uh, that's being built right now, I guess I'm not.
Like on, like on either side, like on the west side and the east side, like uh, I think Lot Two is like really in the middle of what you're looking at now.
Right, yes, mm-hmm.
Yeah, makes.
Yeah. So it, it's, it's the westmost lot uh, from Village of Painted Pastures.
So it'll pretty much just like almost mirror like kinda what you see at the Silk Trade Center now, you know, some like.
Yes, yeah, e- except one, one of the buildings is gonna be larger, there'll be two smaller buildings.
Got it. Great. Great, any other questions?
Okay, the next one, um, this is potential annexation request, there's a parcel off of Home Avenue to the west of. First Street. And it's, uh, it's adjacent to the town, there are water, wastewater there, before it was. Uh, someone's property where they, they, they were contractors and they kept some material there, they would like now to. Uh, build a single-family, uh, hole on it and rezone it, then come into the town. And it's going through right now to see if that's a good match for. You know, for that particular property, it's about seventy-five hundred, seventy-eight hundred square feet in size, so.
Yeah, okay.
Is that right next to the insulation shop there?
It's like right behind it, right?
It's on Home Avenue.
That was on Home?
Yes.
It's between, it's between the church, the church and home, right, that corner.
Well.
Isn't it that corner, first and Home and First, uh, between there and the church?
I, I should have checked. Adjacent to the Main Street Plaza.
Yeah, which there's nothing there, that's a, there's nothing there, this, it's actually two lots over from. Uh, where Daniel Lee came in and got that residential unit approved, running six and twenty-four. If that helps, it's a lot to the east of Highway Feed and Seed.
Are there a bunch of concrete forms stored there?
No, that's.
I know.
Okay.
Was there a trailer on it?
No.
What lot is this? Yeah.
It's interesting.
We need a map.
Parcel.
Okay. I mean, there, there may, there may have been concrete stored there, when I, I looked at this in November.
Oh, is it right behind Highway Feed then, on the south side of Home? That stretched along Home?
On the south side of Home, it's a couple lots to the east of.
It's by Highway Feed, yes, okay.
Oh.
That corner, that piece of.
Utilities there, I mean, it would seem to make sense, but.
I got it.
Uh, we need to look at it like we do anything else.
Right, Highway Feed, then, with that, that old trailer.
Okay.
And that little house, that little, that little white house was at the time.
Well, uh, we'll look at it, I'm gonna get to it, okay, you can keep going, Planner Chain.
Okay, uh, another potential annexation, this is, uh, the Johnson property is about fifty-five acres in size. And it would be north of, um. I guess it's now called the Highlands of Painted Pastures, and it's basically east of Mesa View. And, um, you know, I got a call about it, someone interested in developing it, um, Mrs. Johnson also. Call me to see if it was appropriate to annex, um, I. They haven't done their due diligence yet, they were saying, well, how much can you accommodate, and. My response was, well, what do you wanna do and what are your water rights and, uh. Know there are some arrangements for access there, but they haven't done their, uh, due diligence yet.
Okay.
And when they do, then we'll deal with an annexation request, and I have, uh, had a preliminary conversation. With Public Works related to the, uh, water and wastewater situation out there.
Got it. So it would almost be like just north of Heavenly View subdivision.
It's that, up above where that old silo is.
Yeah, uh-huh, but past that, I think, yeah.
Up the top, above that silo, yeah, that's, that's up there.
Yep, alright, okay.
Okay, Autumn Ridge, um, I had never heard of this before, but it's actually. Um, land that's to the east of the old Silk Cafe. And, and talking to the town engineer, who's actually, um, was one of the owners of the project, there was approval there for thirty-six town home units. That went, that project went south when, um, the Great Recession came. And now they're looking at, uh, another plan, perhaps having some, uh, tiny homes or some such thing in that. Area, uh, so it goes down in L, you know, it's, it's a rise in elevation directly to the east of. Silk Cafe and then it sorta comes down a little bit and, you know, a hundred, two hundred yards to the east. Uh, there is a house setback and that's also on that property. Um. And they, we just had a preliminary discussion on that development information and, uh. I'm gonna put together pre-application notes for what they would have to do in order to move forward, and these homes would be, uh. Stick-built but still relatively small.
Okay.
Families in duplexes, I believe, is what they would like to see right now.
Right there. This piece right here. So that's the hotel, that's that paradise, so, yeah.
Yeah, is that, is that a conflict of interest having the town engineer as one of the owners of that property?
Well, he would not be able to review the plans for the town, uh, we would have to get. A replacement engineer for that particular project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's, and that's one of the things we talked about, we talked about options if they move forward.
Okay, thank you.
That's crazy that that was previously approved for thirty-six town homes right there.
Yeah, where is it at?
So do you know where the, do you know where the Paradise Cafe was gonna be?
The old.
Oh, yeah.
The old Silk Cafe building, just next to it.
Okay.
And that old lot right there with, I don't know, you got like concrete stuff sitting there or whatever, that right there, so. Cool. Alright, we can keep going, Planner Chain.
Okay, and then last but not least, uh, we're looking at doing some code changes related to, um. Uh, modular housing, and there are a number of. Uh, I mean, we could talk about an hour about this particular item, uh, but to make a long story short, the, the town code is not encouraged. Modulars and, uh, many of the code elements actually would prevent them from being expanded. Um. Basically have to get a special use permit to get any modular allowed in town. I particularly don't think that's necessarily a good way to look at the code, because, um, modulars or factory-built housing has. Changed over the last twenty to thirty years that I've been involved in the, in the planning world, it can be good options for people. But in looking at this, um, we've also gotten data from the county and there's a considerable number of. Lots in the older part of town with older mobile homes, older modulators. And there are also some things in the town code which, uh, have certain size requirements, so if someone wanted to update a modular. They'd, perhaps it have, would have to be much larger than they would actually need or want, so there are a number of things in the code that the. Planning Commission is looking at right now, and, uh, we're, we still have a lot to go through to analyze. And in the meantime, we should probably schedule a work session with you to go over some of that information, so you can see where we are at this time.
Got it. Alright.
Nicole, do you wanna add anything about that particular item?
The whole reason why that came to light is because we're trying to figure out how to help one of our. Um, one of our town citizens replace an outdated. Uh, roof sagging, starting to mold unsafe environment, um, figure out how to help him replace that with something that he can afford. And that is, that is where we ended up running into, um, some scenarios where he can't get a unit. Within an eighteen-month time span, but he can't get anything larger than a thousand square feet. He's on a corner lot, and this, this came up because a lot of our downtown areas are in the same scenario, it's one city lot. Or, um, in his case, it's two, but he has an alley and two street-facing sides. And so his setbacks make his building envelope extremely small, and so to put something larger on there is gonna be more difficult for him, so we're trying to look at. What we have in the downtown area that would be beneficial for the town to have replaced at some point in the future. But also provide a scenario in which they can actually, um, people can actually build or replace some of these. Modulars that are not in healthy condition for them to live in, um, by kind of revamping our thought process. On the minimum square footage and, um, and it being a factory-built home. An R-three zone district is the only zone district right now, that, and a factory-built home is a permitted use. So everything else would be a special use. And that's, that's the majority of the downtown area, is it would be a special use, so we're just trying to figure out how to best navigate that for the future. Because we foresee that there's gonna be quite a few coming in, um, that are gonna need to be replaced as we're looking at how things are aging pretty quickly.
Makes sense.
I think that's great, I do, I like that a lot, uh, a valley, the, you, you, I've seen them, uh. Put restrictions on these, uh, modular homes, and then a developer soups in, takes them out, kicks everyone out. I mean, that's, that's, that's how it ends up, unless we do stuff like this to help, to help our citizens, this is great, I do like it, good job.
Yeah, this individual came before the town some years ago to do the same thing, correct?
That's why I was under the impression of.
That's what he said, yes, uh-huh.
So what happened there?
The, the thing is in bad shape, he's a veteran, he, I think he graduated from Glenwood Springs High School, um. That's, that's kinda person that I think as a planner, we, a, a jurisdiction should be helping as long as it's not, um. Unless he's not trying to pull a fast one, let's put it that way.
Well, so in, in the interim, does, is he just gonna apply for a special use permit to allow that, or is he gonna wait for the town to actually change its code?
No, I think, you know, we're gonna have me to go through a various procedure or a special use permit, so.
Yeah.
He knows that he could go and order something, and then if something changes as we go through, we'll just have to deal with it, but I don't want him. You know, it can take a long time, there, there's a lot to bite off on these code.
Well, that's, that's the point, yeah, like.
There's a lot of things, there are a lot of moving parts, and sometimes it takes longer than one thing, so we don't. I'd be able to know he could move something in, in a reasonable fashion and a reasonable timeframe.
Yep, got it.
But thanks for that clarification question.
Mm-hmm, alright, we can, uh, keep going.
Um.
Maybe.
Well, I just had one question, because, yeah, y- you mentioned, you know, a work session or a joint work session with P and Z and the board. Do you have, uh, because we were trying to do that quarterly at least six months, do you have a timeframe when that would possibly happen?
Uh, not off the top of my head, no, I do not, but right now what I'm trying to do is just keep this. Code question going forward and trying to keep these other projects, um, going through. Uh, if, if people wanna resuscitate these projects and get them on the books and, and building, I'm, I'm trying to. Uh, that, that's why we're having two meetings a month with the Planning Commission for a while, to try to expedite things.
Good.
And maybe that work session has to be just at the board level without the Planning Commission, but, uh. Let, let me talk to the town manager about that, uh, in the next day or two.
It's a good idea.
Okay, alright, thank you. And then I had one other question. Um, just real quick, have you heard anything about Iron Horse Mesa on First Street? It just seems like it hasn't done anything in years and didn't know if there's anything in the future.
It's not even on the list.
You asking, you asking me or?
I actually did talk with, uh, the owner of Iron Horse Spaces, uh, some months ago. And I see Nicole unmuted, so she might have more, uh, do you have more current information, Nicole?
I have not talked to, it's Mark Roush, I think.
Yes.
Have not talked to Mark, um, but there's two homes that are in the pipeline right now to be built up there.
Right, uh, if I, um, if I understand the question. From the board, I think it's, uh, whether or not it's gonna expand up there to beyond what it is now.
Yes.
Uh, I had called him some time ago and had a couple long conversation with him, and he told me that he had. So many, uh, projects on the board that this was down the list, and, uh. I think he said something about they're not making that land anymore, so, there's no real hurry for him to move that, move that forward. And frankly for us, uh, given what you've seen tonight, uh, that would, that would be another, a whole other, uh. Uh, 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 bunch of stuff that are, that we'd have to try to pull together, so. Um, but I think we're, we're good with it at this point.
Yeah, no, I, I understood, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, we did reach out to him, uh, some time ago and, and he was, he kinda wanted to. Uh, he's holding back here, so.
Sounds like it's status quo for old Iron Horse Mesa for a while, so, okay.
And then this slide is our building permits that have been issued for twenty-twenty-two. We've had twenty-nine single-family, two multifamily, fifty-eight miscellaneous. Twenty-two excavation, two sign and one chicken permit.
Nice.
Um, we currently have a total of sixteen miscellaneous in processing as well as sixteen. Single-family in processing, eight of which are River Run.
Okay.
So we have been busy on the, on the permit side.
Nice.
Um, the next is the growth opportunities, and Miraloma is on here. Just with phase one, though, the five phases to be determined, but that kinda gives a screenshot of where we are as far as development. Um, how many have been approved, how many units have been built, how many are under construction and, um. I've gotta move my little screen here, and how many are vacant?
Oh, yeah, fourteen, so, somebody, what is Miraloma?
It's an earlier, they, they've had four or five different names for that subdivision.
Yeah, wh- why don't I know where Miraloma is? What is it?
It's Iron Horse.
Oh, that's Iron Horse, oh, okay.
They're, they kinda go back and forth between the two, it was Miraloma at Iron, Iron Horse and then Iron Horse at Miraloma, and then one was out the other each way.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
When they're bored, they change the name. Give it, give it new life.
Kinda like Bell Vista.
Well, sorta, but I'm like, I don't recognize Miraloma and there's five more phases of the thing, like, what?
So they'll have to rename it five more times.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, alright.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah, so does anybody have any questions about the growth opportunities?
Hmm. No.
I'm wondering if the pace of developers coming to the town is going to increase because interest rates have gone up and they're gonna keep going up. And now they're all gonna be in a mad rush to, to get things approved and break ground, what do we do in that case? You don't believe it's gonna happen?
I mean, I think that we've seen it.
I think it's.
I don't think it's happening right now.
It's already started, but.
Pretty much, but it, but it's been two years, I think.
Now there's been a pivotal shift sort of in the economy as a whole, and the feds talking about raising interest rates at least two more times, possibly by three quarters of a point. It seems like any developers who are on the fence are gonna be all in ASAP.
We're getting the heck out.
Or somebody the latter side.
Or, right, or, or jumping out.
Or it's a crash.
Don't, like, don't discount the fact that, that Silk is an opportunity zone. So these developers that are coming in, you know, they're, they're. You know, the, the fact that they can use the opportunity zone and create an opportunity zone fund to do these, like, huge tax breaks. I mean, that's what Bell Vista and those apartments are, that's opportunity zone money for these guys, so that's definitely something we. Shouldn't discount the fact that those guys can come here and park that money and defer and almost, and actually, in fact. Just not pay taxes on that money after so many years, so, that's a pretty big draw to Silk.
And not pay interest?
Yes, on their gain for that money, so that's what an opportunity is, we don't have to get into that now, but that's exactly what it is.
Sitting in escrow.
What's that?
Because it's sitting in escrow.
Well, so it, it's a way for, um, municipalities in a way to kinda spur development, is we were. Well, Jeff can talk more about it, he's, he's the one that spearheaded that, but, yeah.
And really my question is more about workforce capacity than finance, it's, how many, how many more hours does. Do Nicole and Planner Chain and the rest of the people involved in the process have available if there's a mad rush to get more stuff done quicker?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's the natural progression of everything, right, so then as, as the town grows and the workload grows. And if it looks like that's gonna be a fairly consistent growth pattern, you know, then that's, you know, our administrator and town manager then. Makes a decision, I need to hire somebody, you know, so at that point, you know, we create another job or two.
Is, is there a magic number to hire another police officer per, uh, amount of people in town?
There's no magic number for that.
There's no statistic?
No.
No, it's, and it's, you know, uh, it's kind of a misnomer to say. That you build your police force around your population.
Yeah.
It's really about your activity and how much activity they have. If you have a town of three thousand that never has a call, then you need much fewer officers than if you have three thousand. Uh, people who don't know how to behave themselves, so. It's a totally, totally different deal. But I I I did wanna horn in on that development uh que- uh question real quick and I think it's a really good one. And it's something that that I, uh, you know, struggle with a lot and we, I I try to keep. Keep a a good idea on the pulse of things by talking with Nicole and Mark frequently. Um, we've got a a building uh inspection regimen right now that I think is working. Uh, we have two uh planner or two uh building inspectors that were used, uh, contract building inspectors that were using. Um, and we could just continually take the, kinda take the temperature of what's going on and try to make adjustments along the way. And we're certainly not, uh, 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 we, and I, I didn't wanna give the uh. Give the impression earlier that we were at a breaking point when we were talking about Miraloma, cause I don't think that's the case. But I think we are busy. I mean, Nicole uh would tell you that things are are scramble, are uh cracking, you know, you look at the. Building permits that are issued. Um, but I think, I I think too, we're getting more efficient. Uh, you know, we have help in that office now, uh, and Dusty. And Nicole is able to, um, you know, to give her uh de- delegate more. Uh, and uh, so I think we're we're working through that. And I don't think Nicole would be bashful about telling me if uh if we needed more help, so. Um, we are, we are working that way and, I mean, if if it. You know, if it were to hit the fan, then we'll we'll just go out and and figure out what we need to do to make it work. Um. Mark Chain does talk uh about the, some of the bit, some of the uh other governments that he does business with and. They're taking a heck of a lot longer processing these um, these applications than we are. Uh, there are some that are faster, but uh, of course, they've had, they have staff, the staffing to do it. Um, but we're we're certainly not slow by any means uh on most things. Have we been slow on some things? Yes. Uh, but I I've learned in this business and something I didn't know before, that sometimes. Uh, people uh express concerns and complain about how how we're doing things when. What they really need to do is look at how they're addressing the corrections uh that we've uh given them. Uh, to address in their, in their submittals. So, uh, you know, a lot of times it's not. Uh, the town staff that's slowing things down. It's uh, it's, it's uh the developer himself. So, you know, we work with people a- and be, and we're as fast as we can to turn things around. Um, and I think we're doing a pretty darn good job.
What is your timeframe now on, like, permits turnaround? What are, what are we talking, six weeks, eight weeks?
Depends on the permit, but I'll let Nicole talk about those.
Miscellaneous permits are taking up to two weeks depending on the workload, um. We're typically getting them out in a week unless we had back-to-back events like we did the last two weeks. Um, some of them might take up to two weeks depending on if we're getting complete applications. Single families, we're telling people they can take up to eight weeks with the hope that that's gonna include the corrections time. So that'll be when they're getting the plan review back. Um, Bruce Stolock is. Doing our plan reviews as well as inspecting. And he's also gonna be doing some of the zoning reviews as well as Mark, um, depending on Mark's workload with the land use. So. When we get those corrections back to them as far as plan and zoning, we're hoping that we can get those out within eight weeks. It's just gonna depend on how quickly they get the corrections done and back to us.
Okay, it's a reasonable time? Is that a reasonable time?
I'm just curious where we're at with being we, you know, we're behind and then we got two inspectors and just seeing where we're at on timeframe.
Well, I've never built a house before. You have. How long does it usually take?
That's about the timeframe, I guess. You know, there's, you know, I guess I was just curious, like she answered it between the small. Fences and sheds and stuff to the big stuff. I just was wondering if it was all the same or if it was a short. And and so she said, you know, short ones, so that was my question. So that's about right.
And then, um, obviously, community development does more than just uh permits and land use. We have issued one hundred and sixty-one contractors licenses this year, um. Done sixty-three best tests, one hundred and thirty-four business licenses, uh, we've had sixty-three town rentals. Up to date, we also do uh public relations with the website, social media, the LED sign. We have sixteen planned events for twenty twenty-two and we've kicked off a few already this year. We have recreation, um, soccer, basketball and the T-ball started tonight. And uh then P and Z minutes, meetings and minutes.
I have a question on town rentals. What exactly does that entail?
That includes the town center, the town chambers and town parks.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Good.
Any other questions about that?
By the way, I, if I could just add one quick thing, um. You know, Nicole kinda glossed over contractors licenses and business licenses. Um, obviously, all of those are required by our code. And so there's a significant effort that goes into those early every year. And because not everyone wants to comply with those codes. And so, uh, you know, Nicole and Dusty uh are dialing for dollars, so to speak. Uh, to get people to comply and uh you may hear from time to time that uh someone might get a letter. Uh, from the town that basically says pay up or else, cause we've been talking to you for months. And uh, just want you to know how patient and uh, and really, I want you to know how much. Time and effort it it takes to to, you know, to get that level of compliance, so. Uh, we do move, we do treat that um seriously and and uh move that thing forward. And I I have one more wrap-up uh comment about this whole segment, if you're ready for that or if you have any questions about any else.
No, I think we're ready for it.
Okay, um. I I guess to, uh, I I kinda wanna know what your level of um comfort with this presentation is, you know, we uh. It 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 was my idea to do this because I I think. Um, I I see Mark and Nicole and Dusty and and the other staff working. Uh, on these issues every single day. And I'm always amazed at the amount of work and the attention to detail and so forth that goes into this. And I think it's important for the board and for the public to see uh the work that is going on on. Uh, all of our behalfs. And so I wanted to just present it to you, so you had a a a kinda thumbnail. It was really only supposed to take, what, twenty minutes or something, but uh live and learn, right? Um, but uh, I I I kinda wanted to get a sense of whether you felt this was uh important and. And uh, if if there was, if there were any ways we could improve it. Uh, going for, and by the way, um, I did hear uh the conversation. Uh, Chris about uh trying to get together and do the quarterly thing with P and Z. We'll, we'll look at the calendar and see where we are with that. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, how did you guys feel about this um? Presentation, did did you feel any added value? Do you have any, anything we could do to improve it?
Yes, I like it. I I think it's a very good idea ev- to do this every so often.
Well, I think the fact that you thought it was gonna take twenty minutes and it took a lot longer than that kinda shows the value and I think overall. From the land use perspective and you look at all the different building, things that are happening, I mean, it's almost like the. The crux of what we do as a board of trustees, really, you know, as it relates to the code and building. You know, and and balancing residential with commercial and the growth, I mean, this is what it is. And. It definitely highlights the work that staff does on a day-to-day basis that maybe, not even maybe, that does get overlooked by. The board and the citizens. Um, so it's nice to highlight that and understand that, but then on the other side of what we do. It's nice to have that breakdown of all of these different subdivisions and potential um developments that are. That may be happening, right? So now that we've seen it, we've talked about it, we know where these things are. So then in our day-to-day, as we're driving through town or we're going to a different business or we're going to this gas station or that gas station. Oh, this might be here and, oh, you know, like, th- there could be a hundred homes over here, you know, we can start to. Visualize it and we can make decisions as we're going through our day-to-day, like, oh, that would be really cool or. And that might be a lot or, eh, we we need another entrance to these storage units, right, like. Ton of value, Jeff. Yeah, that that's fantastic.
I agree, I, it's a a very nice way to look at everything together, all the developments. In a row and like, like, we talked about one or two developments here and there and then they're all right here.
Right.
Very nice.
And then, and then what are we doing as we're going through this, right? Like, we're looking at a map. You know, cause like, where where's this lot at? Oh, it's that lot, you know, or. Who knew that there were thirty-six townhomes previously approved right next to the old Silt? I I didn't know that, so.
I didn't.
Yeah.
That was way back in the day.
Anyway, yeah, so I guess the gist of that, uh, we liked it, I liked it, ton of value. I would do that. More often than not, you know, so.
I feel like the more we know about, particularly as it relates to the new developments or the re- returning older developments. It's gonna help inform our decision when they're sitting in front of us in a couple of months. Speaking for myself, a lot of these, this is my first awareness of them, so now I'll know a little more and I'll be able to do some homework and be better prepared. When they are here, so I I thought it was tremendously valuable.
Right, and then what, and then what do we get, right? So then we look at the, so we look at the big picture of what. Development could happen here in Silt, right? And then like, at least what I'm thinking of is like, okay. So like, that that's gonna help fund the water plant, that's gonna help fund the wastewater plant, that's gonna help. Fund or that's gonna give us a lot more leverage to get a new overpass built or new off-ramps or on-ramps until we get a new, you know what I'm saying, like? All of that kinda comes with all of this, so.
It adds context to every discussion, I think, back to the discussions about open space and it reinforces the value because there are these developments happening and.
Right.
And to one of the applicant's uh responses earlier, finding that balance, I think that applies to all of us as well.
Bet.
This is tremendously informative.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, good, good on, good on.
We'll keep it up periodically and let you know what was going on and I, I failed to mention that too, obviously, it's important. Uh, for you all to see a bigger picture rather than the drubs and grabs of. Individual projects as they come in, so I think it's really, uh, to to see a. Uh, a large picture of everything is is important, so thank you for that. We'll, we'll keep it up.
Yes, eh, good job, staff. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Good job, staff. Alright, anything else on the community development update?
No.
We're all good there? Okay, so we'll move on from that. So the next item on our agenda is gonna be the discussion regarding. Charter amendment to change the date that municipal elections are held. So it'll be a discussion item. I'm gonna turn this over to. Administrator Lehman and Town Clerk McIntyre.
Feel you wanna pick this up and kick it off and?
Would be happy to. So. I've been thinking about this for a little while and this has really become a trend lately to where a lot of municipalities are. Coordinating with their counties to handle their elections for them. Uh, there's a lot of benefits to this, just in the fact that uh it can save the towns. A significant amount of money over time. The county is more equipped with the uh modern equipment and technology to run elections through much quicker. Than what we can at our small level. Um. It has been proven that there is an increase in voter turnout because people are already getting a ballot for other items that may be on the county's. Ballot and then to have ours on there as well, we've already got their attention, if you will. So, we just thought we would float this by the board to see what your opinion was, if you think this is something we should move forward on or. Um, any comments would be appreciated on it.
I I think it's a good idea. Saves, saves money down the road. I think you will get more voter turnout, cause you don't have one simple little election here and one there, everything's all together.
And yeah, I I've always commented or or complained about low voter turnout myself, so that this might help.
Yeah, that was reason number four. You had, if that were reason number one, I wouldn't have had to go through two through five. Like, increased voter turnout, reduce the cost of doing, what's, what's the potential downside? I can't think of anything. This seems like a no-brainer.
Well, I'll give it to you. It just gets washed out. Like, we're a small town. You know, we get, we get, we get lost in the mix of the, the, the big politicians around here, that everybody knows their name. Everybody knows who they are. They know if they're Republican, they know that they're Democrat, they spend all their time talking about conservative and liberal and. How's it gonna affect the county? And they spend all their time on that and then all of a sudden you got five people from Silt, you know, and they're like, who are these people? That's the downside, is it gets lost in the big-er picture of an election.
Is there a possibility that we could ride the coattails of those bigger discussions? And I'm thinking about articles, news articles that are, to your point, talking about county, state, federal level. There may be more verbiage dedicated to things happening within the town of Silt in the context of being in the same election.
Well, I would think so, like, I would, I would give the benefit of the doubt to like the local journalists here that cover. You know, county elections and and local um municipality elections, you know, like the Post Independent and. Rifle Telegram or whatever, you know what I mean, to kinda cover that, you know, and then just kinda give, you know. Us to do, I guess, you know, when we do our, um, 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 the the forums, you know, for the um. Applicants, if you will, so, I don't know, that was the only downside I thought, you know, is. People might just spend all their time and energy on over here and then, like, we're still here, you know what I mean?
Do your forums, you can still handle, you know, a lot of the um media, the way we currently do and get that word out there.
The, the way that I read this is that we would, would we be on, would it still be a totally separate ballot? For the town of Silt?
It would be on the ballot that the county is putting out, so if they have other questions already on the ballot. Ours would be included on that same ballot. It wouldn't be a separate one.
Alright, okay, so.
So then how do they know?
So real, real world, like, I'm just gonna throw it out there, like, how many of us have gone through one of those big old ballots and just been like, oh, okay, like, I don't care, like. I don't know any of these people, like.
But it's no different than you get a general election, you got your county and you, you're specific for your county and your representative. It's gonna be no different.
How is that any worse than if there's only, and and I'm paraphrasing what you said, the five little people in Silt? And then they look at the their ballot and then they just throw it in the trash.
Because they figure it's not worth.
Because it's only Silt, does that same logic, like, I I literally have a ballot on my counter at home.
So do I.
I'm reading through it, I'm like, who the hell are they? What the hell is this?
Well, cause it's the primary.
One, there's only one for everyone.
But because it's a larger sheet that has a number of things on it, it ha-. And maybe I'm different in this way, it has more value to me as all the parts of the whole, that if I got. A separate piece of paper for each of a third of the items.
Yeah.
One or two of them would probably fall through the cracks.
Sure, and.
Now, how does that ballot work?
I'm fine with it. I, when you said, what's the downside, that could be the downside.
You have a point, yes.
Yeah, no, there's certainly potential for that.
Hey, man, like, it could be the upside, truly.
I hope it's a net positive.
Totally wrong.
I guess, you know, put it on the election, let them decide, you know.
So being that it's on the county ballot though, does it like, do, how do they know if it's people from town of Silt only voting on Silt stuff?
Well, uh.
Cause it's on, you get a different separate ballot, your ballot's different.
Your ballot would be different than the ballot that, even though it's done all by the county, the county's putting out different ballots for different areas.
Right, you don't, you don't get, your ballot doesn't have rifle issues on it.
Just making sure, I I figured it'd be something like that, but I just wanna make sure it wasn't just like a giant.
So we wouldn't be on like the county commissioner's ballot? It would be separate, correct?
No, what what the county clerk has recommended, if we do pursue this, um, Rifle has already done it, they've been doing it for the last couple of years now. But to go to an odd-numbered November election, because that ballot isn't as big, so we wouldn't get lost. In the, the size of a ballot, if that makes sense.
Right, yep.
That'd sound like a concern. Yeah, the, the even-numbered November ballot is usually pretty good size with the, the major elections going on. But if we went to an odd-numbered year, that would help with that.
Okay. So how would that work for town elections? Cause it would be, would it be basically another year?
You, whoever is seated right now, you would be, yeah, your terms would be extended. By statute, we can't reduce your term. So it would just be extended, uh, we put that in the sample ordinance that we did. So it would just be extended. Uh, we put that in the sample ordinance that we did, uh, draft for your.
Yeah, I saw that.
That if we were to move forward with this, then anybody who's currently seated would be. The terms would be extended to the next odd numbered year that would make sense for that term.
Okay, I, I read that. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
I, I guess put it on the ballot and let the people decide. I'm, I got no either way, but.
I'm, I mean, really like, it's all good for me. I just.
I think it might help with voter turnout, but.
That would be nice.
I mean, time, you have time to.
Yeah, cause we've really struggled with voter turnout the last few elections. It's. It's kinda sad to think how few people really take interest in voting anymore.
Right. Alright, I guess we're okay with it, right?
I'd love it to be chosen by the voters. Cause it would be easy for us to say, oh, our terms get extended. That's like, let's do it. But leaving it up to the voters seems like the right call.
Okay.
And something like this has to go to the voters because it's gonna require an amendment to our town charter. So what you're telling us tonight is for us to continue down the road of doing that, which means legal work and just getting our. Attorney to dot the i's and cross the t's on this sample, uh, draft ordinance that we put together. And then we'll need to do this, I think, in a, in pretty short order, right? Sheila, uh, to, like, get it on the ballot, uh, in November, correct?
Correct, yeah. We'll, we'll get it put together here shortly and probably be back to you in July with first reading of an ordinance.
So you're gonna have two, two readings, including public hearings and all that kinda stuff. Uh, to help guide your decision in this. And certainly, your decision to move it forward tonight is not, uh, is not. The last word.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Last thing I'd like to point out on this. Sheila, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, uh, just, I think this is a good example of, uh, staff just kind of. Uh, scanning the landscape and seeing what's important, uh, what's going on out there in the world and bringing back to you. Sort of best practices or things that we see as best practices out there in the world. So we can report back to you and maybe make some suggestions on how we can do things better here at the town.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions about that or discussion? Alright, we'll move on. Uh, so next item will be the, uh, nope, sorry. Be administrator and staff reports and this does include our agenda change for. Administrator Lehman to, um, make your comment. So do you wanna do that now, Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and since I can't wait, I'm not gonna talk about anything on my actual written report. Uh, but we, I did go to the, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning and I learned three, uh, two things. Uh, the board decided and then one thing that we had, uh, been working on for some time. Uh, the first one is, uh, we, we, they did grant us, uh, the town of Silt two hundred thousand dollars out of the. Uh, Conservation Trust Fund that they will get this year, uh, for our parks. And so you'll recall that, that that money had initially sort of been earmarked. For the, uh, the Coal Ridge, uh, rec trail. Which we decided earlier this year that none of us could really, uh, afford. Uh, so we had to back off of that and, uh, Trey and I brought, uh, a package of, um, park improvements. Or developed, uh, the, the park improvements that we'd shared with the, uh, committee and, um, brought those to the board. Uh, B O C C today and they, and they, uh. Liked the idea and they gave us two hundred thousand dollars, uh, for this year to, uh, to, um. Pursue those improvements. So, uh, we're gonna be getting knuckling down and trying to get as much of that done in two thousand twenty-two as we can. So that's a number one. Number two, uh, they passed on first reading the O H V ordinance. You'll recall that. We had asked them, um, and we started on this even pre-COVID, uh, that would allow. Uh, you might recall that, uh, some years ago, I think it was twenty sixteen. The board made it, uh, illegal for O H V use on virtually all the county roads north of town. Which precluded town residents from being able to get to any B L M land. Um, we've been working with them, uh, kind of in slow motion during COVID and we picked it up after COVID to, uh. To open some roads up, um, up there. And I did put that, uh. In your board packet, the agenda sheet. And there is a map on there that shows, uh, what they, they did approve today. Uh, to, um, allow or first reading anyway, to allow O H V use on those roads. North of town to at least allow, uh, uh. Silt residents who wanna drive their O H Vs up to the B L M. Land at Squirrel Valley. They can drive up there and, and use their, uh, their machines up there. Uh, they set their second reading and public hearing for, uh, July fifth. Um, and I think it would be really impactful, um, if we could get, uh, um, however many. Uh, trustees as might like to testify or to make, uh, a public comment there. Uh, at that meeting would be really helpful. And any citizens you know in Silt who may. Uh, wanna back that up, it'd be great for the commissioners to hear from them. So that's number two. And then number three, something I heard, uh, when I was walking out the door today is that the county did get that broadband grant. That we've been, uh, paying for or, uh, uh, working towards, um, which will. Uh, I think it's a, it's, it's some, a little over three million dollars that will establish. Location neutral. And Derek, if I get this wrong, you'll hopefully correct me. Uh, location neutral, uh. That's not it. Uh, well, let's just call it meet me centers because that's another word for it. Uh, in, uh, in Newcastle, Silt and Parishu.
Nice.
Which will. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead. Sorry, I just, I said nice.
Um, and it will allow the, uh, uh, fiber for broadband. To come off of the, the line that runs down I seventy into each of those towns. And then I think the plan will be that, uh, the last mile providers will be able to. Grab onto it there and take it into our communities, uh, to finally, uh, provide a, a, uh. A, uh, a reasonable, um, competitive. Uh, I would say, uh, a competition for Comcast. So that'll be, uh, we'll, obviously we'll have more detail on that as we move forward, but I think that was. That was a, a good day at, uh, at, uh, at the county offices today to get, uh, all that information. I wanted to pass that on to you. Any questions on any of that that I can answer at this point?
Can you, Derek, go?
I was just, I was just gonna ask Jeff, if you, if you get any details on that broadband announcement. Um, I'm supposed to be meeting with Evan and Julie and Kevin, uh, this Friday to discuss the talking points for next Wednesday. So again, if you have any even slight details about that. That bill being approved, I would really appreciate it. Cause we're supposed to be bringing talking points. Right now I've got too many, so I'm trying to narrow them down. I heard that. I saw that snicker by the way.
I would say three million dollar grant's a pretty good talking point, so.
And I, and I think everybody's probably gonna have it on the talking point now, but I would like to be the front of the line. Come on now.
Yeah, yeah.
No, kidding aside, yeah, any, any info or details you have about that would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know at what point there'll be public information, you know, I, I mean, and not to say it's not public already. Uh, it was made in, you know, a public session. Uh, but in, in, in terms of the public announcement, I don't have any information on that at this point. But I'll, uh, if anything, I do need to reach out to Jamaica. She's, uh, running that program. For the county and, and she cornered me today and said, we need to sit down and start moving that thing forward. So. If I get anything more on that, Derek, I'll, I'll for sure clear you in.
Thank you.
And then I was just gonna follow up Jeff on the two hundred thousand dollar grant from the county commissioners, um.
Yep.
Is that money is very specifically tied to the presentation that you and Trey gave to them regarding what we would use that money for?
Correct.
And was that mostly the fall protection in a couple of the parks, right? So we did the Flying Eagle Park. Mesa View Park. Do you have that in front of you? If not, no problem, but.
I, uh, I don't have a, um.
That's okay.
I don't have it right in front of me, but I can tell you Flying Eagle Park had some significance improvements, significant improvements on. Uh, creating a walking path all the way around.
Right, yeah.
Cause we heard parents, uh, really thought that was important.
Yep.
Uh, which we're gonna add that, uh, we're gonna replace the fence. Uh, we're gonna do some irrigation improvements there. Because we need to accommodate the, the path, of course, the walking path.
Oh, yeah.
The, the basketball court there, fall protection, uh, all of that stuff at that park.
Cool.
Uh, we're gonna replace equipment at, uh, playground equipment at Veterans Park and, um. Uh, help me out Eagles View Park.
Okay, yeah.
And fall protection in both of those parks. Um, those are the big ticket items.
Cool.
Uh, we're gonna skin the baseball field and put, uh, some, um, increased, uh, our options for base pads up there.
Oh, great.
And that's gonna take a lot of work, irrigation as well. Um.
Oh, that's good.
Amy, Nicole, anything else you can think of that was on that list that I might be forgetting?
I can't think of anything.
Alright, no worries. And then.
We'll, we'll, we'll do a report on that, uh, and let you know what we're, what we're doing and when we're gonna do it. Obviously that's a lot of work for our staff to do, so.
Right.
Um, we'll be prioritizing, prioritizing that and, and working on getting, getting it done.
And then, uh, the last question I had on yours, Jeff. So, uh, just really quickly, so what was the? What is the scope of the Dewberry Engineering Study? That they are going to report on June twenty-seventh and to, so at their next meeting?
They're gonna talk about both, uh, water and wastewater plants, the evaluations of those plants where they currently sit in terms of. Their capacities.
Okay.
And they're gonna talk about, uh, what we need to do in both the short and long terms to approve or to im- improve them.
Okay.
Um, uh, we, uh, the, the sewer plant. Uh, is a little further down the road in terms of what needs to happen there than the water plant. Water plant is a little bit more, uh, time sensitive.
Sure.
And, uh, I, I, I believe, and I haven't seen any final work on this yet, but, um. Remember early on, we thought that there were gonna be some things we could do in the short term that could kinda. Hold us over for a period of time with the water plant. Uh, it appears now that we're gonna need to, uh, take a little bit bigger bite. Um, earlier than we thought.
And then is there, is the Dewberry Engineering Study, um. Is it, is it a completely independent study that's just from Dewberry or is this engineering study in conjunction with? The last two years of Zankinella's engineering that he's been doing.
Oh, Zankinella for sure had impact on this study. You know, obviously he's our. Uh, our operator, um, our O R C out there.
Mm-hmm.
And so he's definitely had some input into this product.
Right.
Um, as have our operators. Uh, Dewberry's been, I think, really good about including Trey and the operators. Uh, in, on, uh, on, on their work. Uh, including, uh, I think a meeting even last week, uh, with them. So. Yeah, there's, everybody's had a hand in, in, uh, in, in this final project or product.
Okay, got it. Alright, uh.
Um, I got a question. I guess maybe you can answer. I see here on Trey's report. It shows, it says, uh, on Ninth Street, they said there's some more signs of failure. Are those new ones now or is that? It says here, some areas were patched and fixed, but more has started to show signs of failure. Is that some new ones now or is that the other one?
Actually, there are, there are some new ones there and we're, uh, working with the paving company to try to identify the causes of those.
Okay.
And they come up with a solution, but yes, those were additional signs of failure.
Bummer.
That's all I have.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
For staff or administrator? No? Okay. If, uh, no other questions, then we can move on to updates from board and board comments and we can start with trustee Henrichan.
Uh, three, quickly, um, first of all, thanks again to all the candidates tonight. It's really good to see. Good people, but also strong candidates wanting to be more involved in the community. I think that's a really good sign and I'm absolutely thrilled. Um, second, uh, big thanks to Nicole Dusty and, uh, Silk P D. And all the other folks who took part in the movie in the park. The other week, as well as the concert this weekend. Both had really big turnouts. I think our events are gonna be huge this summer. Uh, and props to them for all the hard work they do. In addition to all the other stuff that Nicole and Mark Planner Chain showed us tonight. She's running those events as well. Uh, last point I wanna make, and, and we referred to it earlier with regard to ballots. Uh, ballots for the Garfield County primaries have gone out. If you haven't received it, you will. Uh, my dad always used to say to me that decisions are made by those who show up. And this is our chance, your chance, if you're watching or listening, to choose who gets to show up and represent you. And I urge everyone to take the five minutes it, it requires to vote. It's critically important in our, in our processes, even as a town. That's it.
Great, thank you. Trustee Flores?
Uh, I'd like to congratulate the new P and Z seat filled, uh, Griswold. Um, congratulations, welcome aboard. Um, great job to our staff and all of this reports we put together and all you do. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, trustee Brittenow.
Um, again, yeah, I was at the concert on Friday. Ton of people, lot of fun, weather was perfect for it, which helps a lot. Um, look forward to seeing the farmer's market starting in July. Uh, be live music, different person out there every week, which is gonna be neat to see. Um, having Veterans Park, I think is gonna be a neat change. Be a lot cooler, a little bit easier for people to get to than trying to get off of the highway as people run by to get to go to visit it. Um, looking forward to figure out what I'm gonna cook for dinner on Wednesdays based on what's at the market. So should be fun. Um, and then just thanks for all the hard work everybody's doing.
Great, thank you. Trustee Sefer?
Uh, nothing, just, uh, thanks to all the staff for all the work. They've been pretty busy this last month, so, um, just hurrah to them.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Claussen?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the other trustees' comments and good job, staff. And, yeah, you guys have been extremely busy. And it looks like you'll continue to be busy. And, um. I had a quick question. Did, did I happen to see the concession trailer driving away a couple of weeks ago? Did you guys sell it?
You did. It was sold, um. Uh, uh, that's about right. About two weeks ago, we had it on an auction site and. Uh, after a significant amount of time on that site, I think, uh, someone. I don't know if they actually bought it from this. Oh, yeah. Yes, they did buy it from the site. Yep. Yes, sir. Sold.
Nice. And I'm assuming you got what you wanted out of it?
Remember, I don't remember how much it was. Amy, do you remember what we got for that?
Thirty-six, which is twice as much as what our, our closed bid was when we had bids submitted to the town. So the highest bid we had was eighteen and this was thirty-six.
Oh, wow.
Nice.
Wow, yeah.
Good. Anything else?
That's all my comments tonight.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I would like to also just kinda echo the work that the town staff does, I think, on a day to day. Like I mentioned before, with the, uh, presentation, I certainly do think that your day to day operations go somewhat overlooked. By the town and then also the citizens. So thank you guys for what you do, uh, every day. Uh, we certainly appreciate that. Um, I would also like to just mention to our town staff to maybe really push hard on, I believe it was Frontier Paving. That did that job on Ninth Street. Um, and, and let them know that we need a resolution and we want it fairly quickly to find out what's going on. And then how we're gonna come up with a solution to get it fixed. Um, spent a lot of money to get that road repaved. And it almost looks like it hasn't been paved. So, like to leave that with that. Um, other than that, next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Oh, alright, we have a motion by trustee Sefer to adjourn, seconded by trustee Brittenow. All those in favor? All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned.